2018, it is 5:30 PM and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's do roll call.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray, McCambo?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Okay, I have a Mayor's Award recipient that apparently is running late tonight, so maybe we'll get to that here in a little bit. On the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have six resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the 200 block of Spring Street. Third is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for State of Iowa Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy, or RISE, funds for a new roadway in the Flint Ridge Business Park. The fourth is a resolution approving contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for Burlington Urban Service Planning Assistance. The fifth is a resolution rescinding the sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And the sixth is a resolution approving membership in the Houston-Galveston area council cooperative purchase agreement. We also have some hearings set for August 20th, 2018. The first is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The second is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The third is consideration of sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The fourth is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 3129, being an ordinance creating the D-Walt Plaza PUD, or Planned Unit Development, by making changes to Section 3B Land Use Design Criteria and Section 5, 50-foot buffer park. The fifth is a consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for use of fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex. And the sixth is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 97 Industrial Pretreatment Requirements of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. And we also have two appointments, Bear Proton?
Yes, we have for the Joint Safety Committee reappointing Matt Truxell and Ryan Gorley, and also for the Riverfront Advisory Committee appointing Patricia Walls.
So, thank you for serving. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed?
Sheehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Never want to let you down. Item number three under resolutions.
All righty. Can I get your motion?
Yes, I motion to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda except for Resolution number three.
Give me a second. My second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, resolutions.
All right, here I have a resolution establishing solid waste fees.
Second?
Thank you.
Sorry, I've got to remember I'm...
All right, so this is a resolution we've talked about in regards to establishing the cart program. This would set fees effective at November 1 and ongoing with the new cart system. It'd set the fees 1425 a month for the 35-gallon, 1750 a month for 65-gallon, and then a 95-gallon at 2075 per month. What that essentially allows is a customer who does choose the 35-gallon cart with this new program to stay at the existing fee for garbage service, has the option to do that if that's what their desire is. Also establishes fees for those customers who have a second container under this system would be able to choose a second 65-gallon container for $8 a month, or a second 95-gallon at the $12 a month. This would also change the way our tag fees are done. Our tag fees are currently $2 a tag. This would implement a new tag system. The new tags would be at, we're listing at $390. That's what we would sell it to the retailers, and they would typically be selling it for four bucks each. You also see in here this service charge for a change-out on an ongoing basis for when, except where you're having a new homeowner or renter. If someone's changing cart sizes, there's a $35 service charge to do that as we check one in to inventory, check one out, delivery and setup of the new cart. Again, our existing fees would stay in place until after the new carts are delivered and as we move into the new system.
Okay. We've already been here. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Mr. Sheehan?
Number of questions. I'll try and stay on topic here. First of all, I understand there's a delay in the form for choosing when, what size container we're going to get. What's the status on that?
There was a one-week delay on that. Those mailers will go out August next week? Is that right, Don?
They were to be the 13th, not the 20th.
They're going out on the 20th, and then there'll be a three-week timeframe for folks to be able to respond. They'll be able to respond to those by either returning the mailer or there'll be a process to register online with your cart size by address.
Since I'm downtown a lot, what office would you return that to? The Water Works or somebody here?
That can go to, I would assume, Don, that that could go to either City Hall or the Water Department with the bill, or how's a mailer set up?
The Water Department's are going to give to us at the Waste Water Plan, but I don't know why you wouldn't just drop it with the man.
Yeah.
Postage paid, postcard.
Yeah.
Well, that works.
Prepaid postcard. And is it being set up to automatically be returned to your department, Don, or?
No, it will go to Rarig.
To Rarig itself. So, Rarig will collect them if they're sent that way, but otherwise, they can be dropped. I assume you could drop them off either City Hall, the Water Department, down at the Sewer Department. Wherever they end up going to, it'll all end up ultimately going back to Rarig.
And remind me again, but Don, you can also go online and do this, right? So, you can go onto a website, put in some type of code which will identify that address and that mailer, and then you can choose your cart online and then submit it right there, and that information will automatically be uploaded.
And we've had, Don's already had at least one customer who won't be available during that timeframe, make contact, and we've worked with them to try to get that done so that we can make sure that we register what they're wanting to have for a cart size even though they're not available during that three-week timeframe.
Right. But I'd like to bring, since you brought it up, for those that are listening, if you're anxious and you want to get it done, go online and get it done, and it'll be done and done. That's a good question.
I guess the next question in that vein, I've been around the world enough to know that there's going to be errors. What about the $35 fee if something gets done wrong?
Someone can show us that there's an error.
My guess is that if there was an error made on our part, we'll change that out. But if there's an error, if a person chooses, it's really important to remember if you choose a cart and then for whatever reason that cart doesn't fit what your initial choosing was, that there will be a $35 fee. That's why we're encouraging a lot of people, even if you're going to go out and get that one trash tag a month, you're going to end up paying more than you would if you just chose a 65-gallon cart. So, if somebody chooses a cart, and that's the cart that's dropped off, and then three months later, they want to go to a different cart, then they would pay that fee. But if, for example, they chose a 35-gallon cart, but we put a 65-gallon cart in their driveway, then I would assume that we'll take care of that.
But ordering the wrong cart, that's not a mistake. That's just bad judgment.
No, I'm not saying ordering. I'm saying...
If there's a mistake on the city's part, I'm sure we'll get that taken care of.
In that vein, I guess I'm not understanding why we're having the stickers. Tell me about that.
So, the idea of the trash tag, and you guys can correct me if they're wrong, but in my line of thinking, the idea of the trash tag is to give somebody the opportunity to have additional trash picked up that won't necessarily fit in their cart, i.e. if there's a graduation party and they produce more trash during that one particular week, maybe during or around Christmas time, after somebody opens a lot of packages. If they fill their container, but they have an additional trash bag, they don't have to hoard that bag or hold on to it to the next week. They'll be able to go out and get the one-time trash tag, put it on that bag so that it's collected, so.
I've got a lead that lives right next to me, and that's the only time she's going to need tags, is Christmas. She's like, "I'm fine with my trash can." I said, "Then stick with it, and for Christmas, you can get your trash tags." So, just to make it...
I've never bought one of those tags in all the years.
Because you're good that way, Leon.
Well, I recycle.
God bless you.
Next question, and I ask about this, I'm kind of confused. What happens to the citywide cleanup and the yard waste cleanup and all this?
We haven't necessarily had that conversation yet. That's something that we'll discuss as the year goes by. There's a lot of information that Don's still collecting, but there's the potential where that's going to change to what we don't know, we'd be speculating.
What the bigger trash cans are supposed to do is give us an idea of how important the spring cleanup is going to be, and maybe we can kind of cut that back or something. But, again, if you caught the last...
Well, I guess my question there on that, I'm a gardener. About half my yard is in some sort of flowerbed or...
That's true.
Vegetable garden. You can drive by there and see for yourself. At the end of the year, there's quite a bit of yard waste. I can't imagine trying to put all of that, for instance, in a 65-gallon can. I think it'd break it. The weight of that stuff would be...
Well, that's not for yard waste, though. So, as we're still sticking with the same plan with, I would imagine, you can check with Don, for yard waste, I thought we were still doing it with the bag.
Well, I assume that one thing that has been done in the past, you could use your, if you had a 30-gallon container out there that you're putting your bags into...
And that's what I use.
You could put your yard waste into that for pickup the next day, and that's been allowed in the past. You're not looking to have that occur as we move forward, are you, Don? As we move forward with the new containers, you're going to have, I mean, everyone's going to be forced to go into Lowe's or wherever and buy the contain, those $2 bags.
So, you want $2 bags?
Well, what do those cost? That's not $2. It's like $5 for $2.
But, Don, does the potential exist where perhaps we move to a program that does allow people to use the larger containers that we issue? So, for example, if we collect trash on Tuesday, and then we're going to do yard waste pickup on a Wednesday, they could fill it? I know that was mentioned at one point in time. We never really came to a complete conclusion as to how we were going to move forward with that, but I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse on some of this stuff.
Well, we're talking about what we're paying for this, and I think we need to know what it includes and what it doesn't.
Sure.
I don't envision a change to the leaf program, and that's what we're talking about, is we do three weeks of leaf collection in the spring, seven weeks in the fall. Certainly during those time periods, people are raking the yard, and they're getting twigs and stuff like that. In the fall, they have garden plants that they cut off or pull. We don't, I mean, all this material goes into the compost pile at the landfill. They've got a windrow turner that they operate, turning the grass and the leaves. Certain sizes or certain types of material are going to clog up that machine, so that's why we limit the wood or the twigs that we take to no bigger than one inch in diameter. Certainly don't want to be throwing big tomato plant root balls in there. So, I don't see the program changing. We still do, we do pick up some garden plants that get pruned or prunings off of bushes that go into those yard waste bags. A former council wanted the leaf program to be, take place on the day after garbage pickup so that the resident who didn't want to buy the paper yard waste bags could use their empty garbage can, which was emptied the day before, put their yard waste or their leaves in that can, set it out at curb regardless of whether they're curbside or alley pickup for garbage, and then we would have to empty those cans. I don't like that program because it takes more time to deal with the cans than just simply pick up a bag and throw it in the truck and go on. But that's what we do. We emptied those 33-gallon cans of leaves, which may have grass that's been raked with the leaves, might have twigs in it, and so on and so forth. We do not have a yard waste program per se. During the summer, people who want to cut their grass and collect it, and they can use a private hauler for that service. Now, the question was, has been asked, are we going to allow the use of these carts for pickup of leaves? I have mixed feelings about it. Certainly it saves the wear and tear on the guys picking it up. I guess, at this point in time, I would envision that that probably will occur if people are willing to wheel their cart out there and put grass or put leaves in it. But I don't like the idea of the carts, and I don't like the ideas of cans, but that's what it is.
I hear you. I hear you. He's right there. You got anything else you want to?
Well, I guess, when do we find out how this is, you know, when are you going to make a decision on this? Because right now, what I do is, when they do the leaf collection, I have five 33-gallon cans that you'll find out in front of my place.
Don, would you see it, I mean, I guess it's something that we'll have to get a finite, more finite answer to. I don't necessarily have a problem with allowing people to use the carts, maintaining the same format, picking it up one day, trash one day, picking up yard waste the next, using the larger cart if they get it. Or perhaps, in your instance, Leon, you may keep some of your 35-gallon cans that you've got now, and we would continue to allow to have those used for yard waste only, not for trash, but just for yard waste. I mean, at a worst-case scenario, do you see any reason why we wouldn't be able to continue to move towards that type of program?
No.
We're already there right now, essentially.
No.
Okay.
Not unless I get my way.
I mean, one of Don's concerns with the leaf pickup program, you're, this, using the carts is going to create, it's going to slow down pickup times from what the current system is, and as you get into those special weeks, those are the hardest, the highest strain on the department for making sure that they can get everything accomplished. And using those 30-gallon containers to pick up leaves doesn't help that process.
No.
And that's one of the things, they're already going to be stressed on time, especially this first year.
This year in particular, this will be our first year of doing this program, and as with any new program, there's a learning curve.
We're working out bugs, man.
There's a learning curve, so it's going to be very, very difficult this fall.
We're going to ask for your patience, Leon. We're going to need your patience, Leon.
What if I don't have any?
Well, we're going to ask you to buy some, but they're selling some real cheap across the rivers.
One thing I'll tell you, Leon, is we're definitely going to do everything we can to try and make that program as convenient and as efficient, not only for the city, but also for the homeowner. So, we're not going to leave you high and dry. We're not going to tell you that...
Well, my concern there is, we went to this leaf collection and yard waste collection, so people didn't burn.
Yeah.
I have respiratory issues. I appreciate the stuff being picked up rather than burning and making the whole town stench.
Mm-hmm, sure.
That's all I have.
Mr. Sheehan, you've always, you never let me down, man. I appreciate you. Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? All right, then. Counsel, are we good?
Yes.
Let's vote.
I'm good.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, have...
Mr. Phillips, enjoy your vacation.
All right, thank you. Guys, take care, and everybody say an extra blessing for our firefighters and the excellent work they did over the weekend. I'm sorry, a lot of town for one weekend. Look what happened.
That's all right.
I'll be back.
There you go. Enjoy yourself. We'll see you when you get back. Be safe.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Central and Washington Bridge Repairs.
Second? Second. Mr. Mack?
Good evening. The resolution in front of you would award contract to Brant Construction in the amount of $297,818 for some maintenance-type work on the Central Avenue Bridge. Those include some retaining wall work, bridge abutment, gap fixes, and then some drainage issues that are caused by not allowing the water to flow off, which ultimately has caused us some issues for soil erosion around the wing walls. The budgeted amount that we have is $350,000. With the engineering costs, it takes us over the budgeted amount of $352,000. We were using TIF revenue bonds to pay for this project. The initial plan was done by Stanley Consultants to be done over the next several years. Seeing that we have the bids in front of us all at once, one time, I recommend awarding contract for the full amount to do all the work at one time.
Well said.
You're going to have a, most likely, depending on how the contract works out, a shortfall on there that will get covered by road use tax or general funds that we've already borrowed for street improvements.
Correct.
You also already know that you have one change order you're going to be at least looking at to address on that.
The eastern spur of it has some bridge deck issues that we need to take a look at.
What was, what's the shortfall expected to be?
About $1,000. I mean, and this is part of, is, one of the things you borrowed this last year, our street overlay program, had about a million that you had borrowed, and your main project out of there was significantly below that.
Yeah, the $1.4 million that we have for geo-bonded road work, we, the asphalt project that you're seeing on Flint Hills and Shields is about a $600,000 project. We had planned on doing some extra concrete work to spend the full amount, but after we got Agency Street East come in overbid, we were a little guarded on trying to do that project on top of it, so we have some funding available to take care of this shortfall, and then also, like, Agency was a little bit overbid.
We have some flexibility as well out of road use tax and has funds available to make it happen, and we don't want a project like this to get shortchanged in terms of the work that gets done, so.
Otherwise, we're going to end up fixing it.
Sounds good to me. Questions or concerns from the audience?
That's my dude.
Leon Sheehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I promise you, for the rest of these resolutions, I won't bother you.
Don't bother, my friend. What's up?
We're still paying on this bridge, as far as I know, and we're having to do what I would consider major repairs. This bridge originally cost a million and a half. The railroad added up for part of it, and we borrowed the rest. This kind of bridge wasn't really meant for what it's being used for. My understanding, if my memory is correct, along the Missouri River over a levee and a railroad right-of-way to cabins along the river, much less traffic density than what this bridge is carrying. You're talking about the abutments having a problem. As I came down here today, I looked on the northeast corner of that bridge, right in the intersection, there's a large crack opening up. I really think, I don't know how else to say this, tear that bridge down and make an intersection. You own the land across from it now. You can make a nice intersection so the railroad's happy. What we have now is a mess anyway. But if you're going to keep spending money on this, that bridge is what, 10 years old?
No, it's older than that.
It's not very much older than that.
I'm not sure, but it's older than that. It's a...
It's probably 15 years old.
It's got to be. It's got to be. Yeah, it's got to be.
Yeah, but...
I hear what you're saying. No, I hear what you're saying.
It's a 15-year-old bridge, and you look at that compared to the Mount Pleasant Street viaduct, and I have no special interest there.
I hear what you're saying. Tear it down. I don't hear that, but I understand where you're coming from.
This, the bridge that you have there is going to be a constant headache. We're going to keep doing this and keep doing this. That crack isn't going to go away, and I don't know how you fix that, because the deck is the supporting structure on that bridge. It's not like the viaduct on Mount Pleasant Street where you have steel girders. If that deck fails, the bridge fails, and it looks like it's failing to me. I think we really need to consider, do we want to keep throwing money at that bridge? You know, you're talking a bridge, it's still, whether 10 years or 15 years old, we're spending 20% of what we paid for the bridge to fix it, and we've had other repairs before this. Don't throw good money after bad.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? And just to, I just want to say this to you, you know, that bridge is here, and we're going to have to maintain that bridge. And I understand where you're coming from, and maybe that's something that needs to be looked at down the road, but if it's here, if it's in the house, we've got to maintain it whether we like it or not. Everybody, I'm sure you've got a room in your house that you don't like, but you're going to maintain it because it's part of the house. So, we're still going to maintain that bridge, but, again, I understand where you're coming from.
I understand too, Leon. I think that now that that building's gone, Murray Iron Works that will probably have the ability to do something else in the future, but once the bridge is there, it's there. So, I just don't see the ability to remove it at this point.
Okay. Counsel, we good?
Yes.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Tama Building Permeable Alley.
Second? Mr. Mack?
If you remember our discussion last week, my recommendation based on, at that point, the current status of the Tama Building project and the alleyway that they were preparing to construct, I recommended not awarding contract to FI Excavating, I believe it was the low bid, based on the grant award and the timeframe that it needed to be executed by and leaving us out to, you know, out to dry as far as financially it goes if they weren't to have it completed. Now, given the current status, I would definitely echo the same concerns.
Thank you, sir. Questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel, I think we need to discuss this, do we? Kathleen?
Wilson?
No.
McCambo?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution acknowledging emergency nature of angular arch sewer repair work at Front and Valley Street.
Give you a second? Second?
In front of you is a resolution acknowledging, per our purchasing policy, anytime we have the ability to go out and fix issues, infrastructure, for instance, the 8th sewer, South 8th Street sewer issue, this issue that become an emergency that need to be tackled immediately rather than have to wait to go through council action. What this resolution does is acknowledge from a letter from a licensed engineer who is here that this is an emergency fix of the things that we've done so far. We also have an action item on there to award contract to make the permanent fix for this. We just, normally in an emergency case, we probably wouldn't have this come through council, but the timing of it worked with the way that the council meetings were set up, so we wanted it to come through council. So, all this resolution does is give the authorization for us to function in an emergency setting.
Okay. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I've just got some questions on the clinger estimate. $324,000, that was the number you didn't have last week that you have this week, right? And is that for the entire repair, or is that just the emergency repairs?
I left that sheet on the back. I have my numbers there.
That's for what was bid?
That was for...
Yeah, the next item is, we'll have a little bit better foot up on this.
So, to date, we have a pay request of $106,000 and change, and then an estimate of $31,858.75 of what we consider the emergency repair. The rest of it was bid out, and I have those numbers. We did that earlier today. So, we are at about $140,000 of emergency-type repair that we've performed on top of...
For the first phase.
For the first phase of this project. We also have engineering fees associated with that that we have, I think, a $16,000 invoice for. So, we'll get into the bidded number here in the next action item.
As far as the emergency stuff goes, and I noticed the tracks were being moved down down there, and they were, they were moving a portion of the new track over, putting in a new track. Is that, are we taking care of that? Does the short line take care of that?
Right now, the short line is...
Financial responsibility coming in there.
Right now, the short line is taking care of that. They've coordinated all efforts on that. That's still gonna be something that we'll have, have to have a discussion with the short line about where, what's the appropriate breakdown.
The one gap that I could see where we maybe have some responsibility in is the mobilization or demobilization of when they had tracks set up just east of, of the area, and then after some conversation with contractors, we had to actually excavate that area, that's some of the dollar figures that you're seeing, and shore that, and Mr. Bros could testify what's being done. We had to actually shore that up, so they actually removed some of the track, and then we're, then they had to put it back down. So, for that amount, I could see us definitely having some responsibility in covering. I don't know what that monetary figure is.
At the same time, this is still something that we have to go through some further evaluation to see what's the appropriate breakdown of what's, whose responsibility and whose...
Those numbers aren't gonna be included in your numbers tonight.
Correct.
And based off of the look of those machines, they were probably pretty expensive.
There's also some work that Brant is doing, I think, for their main line stretches that's included, so we, when we get into that conversation with the railroad, we're gonna need to see a breakdown of what was actually done and spent for this additional spur versus what was being done for regular maintenance that they had called in.
The answer to that, though, is you think about, we've spent 150,000 already, and you have for you after this, this next piece is, depending on the level of work needing to be done, from 250 to 350 on top of that. And the railroad side, the kind of work that they're doing, the init, just the ballpark that we heard was a 200?
150, 200.
200,000 potentially that they're spending. The overall cost for everyone involved is pretty high. You're close to 700,000?
6, 650.
All right. Nothing cheap. Any other questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel, we're good?
Yeah.
Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Number five.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair.
Second. Mr. Mack.
As I said earlier, we received bids this morning at 10 o'clock, or 11 o'clock, rather. I don't know exactly what resolution you've given them, Kathleen, just the one that I have here, the blank one.
Right.
You don't have the contractor name or the dollar figure?
They have a motion to amend.
They do, okay. So, we had one bidder this morning where the base bid came in at 247,700, which is about a $30,000 over the original estimate. After speaking with Mr. Bros, I think a lot of, a lot of the increase is the risk that goes with it and the ability to de-water and to pull out the stop blocks when they're, when they're doing it, and then kind of the unknown of what is the arch sewers integrity and getting down in there. There was also two base, or two alternate bids. Alternate bid number one is a design and dollar figures to work on the northern chamber, where we don't know if there's any damage, but as we take things apart, we don't wanna get into a spot where we don't have any ability or plans or bidded numbers on correcting that either. So, that's what alternate number one is. And then alternate number two is a mobilization, demobilization, so taking out the stop blocks at the end of the Hawkeye sewer so that we can, when we can de-water, should we have high water levels or a lot of rain in the future, that is quite a bit of stormwater coming down there from, from the overall city, the basin. So, in the resolution, I believe Kathleen has changed it, allowing the city manager to authorize those two alternates, should they be necessary during construction, rather than have to come back to council to award those back out. And Mr. Bros is here, he can talk about maybe the construction and the, the design of what we're doing here.
Mr. Bros, can you, can you come up for a second, please? Can you give us the five-dollar scoop on that?
Yeah, so I got called on July 16th by Nick McGregor, and void was discovered underneath the railroad tracks. We discussed at that time, due to the urgency of the railroad track safety there, that we would work with the local contractor, we got prices from two contractors and worked with the local contractor to put a temporary patch in there to allow the train to mobilize. At the same time, that occurred on July 17th, and at the same time, we began to design a more permanent fix for what we thought was, and we think is, the south barrel collapse there. So, what, what is there, there's two barrels, one, the south one is a 10-foot diameter barrel, which we believe is the original construction, and then a later construction, a 12-foot barrel is on the north side, and there's a significant blockage in that 10-foot barrel on the south side under where the track was. So, we devised a plan, a 10-step plan, to do a permanent fix, which required us to drive sheet pile on the north and south sides of that area that you see there. So, if you look at this picture, this is just kind of a cartoon of it, but the front street's on the left, north is up, Memorial Auditorium is up to the upper right, you don't see that, and the railroad track is in the center. You see a pedestrian crossing above, below the lower, or the upper box part there, and basically this is right in the drive to the south parking lot Memorial Auditorium and right under the track. And so what we, what our part, I won't go through all the 10 steps, it's kinda complicated, but we needed to get the track out of the way so we could fix the sewer safely. So, we've, we've accomplished, basically, the east half, the dark blue, we've got a place there where we've stabilized the sewer, and we've, we've got the track moved onto that. We did find damage, severe deterioration there, were able to cover that, and then we're currently working on the blue rectangle on the left side, which would be the west, what we call the west bulkhead, and that'll be done this week. Then the portion in yellow is the part that's the permanent repair, which is the base bid, and that'll be to put a concrete box there, and then the railroad track will be put back where it belongs.
What about the, what about the end that's, that's 12-foot? We don't know much about, about what's...
We uncovered it on the east side under that blue rectangle on the right. We uncovered it, it seems to be in pretty good condition, we didn't detect damage there as much as we did on the 10-foot one.
How far, how long did that run? How far up into the city is that coming?
The dual chamber.
Yeah, it goes back past Fifth Street, which is dual chamber, and then it becomes one sewer going back up along the railroad tracks of the Hawkeye. So, and it was, we think the 10, 10, not all the way up there, but we think the 10-foot one was built earlier than the 12-foot, based on the way it's constructed.
Early 1900s, early 1800s?
1800s, yeah.
What's the overall condition of that chamber? Do we have the ability to inspect that?
It's not currently safe and hasn't been accessible from the riverside.
Okay.
And I don't, we don't have any records that we know of, of that portion, that, that is something that needs to be done.
Does it make sense, once we open this up, to at least put something in it, whether it's a camera and run it up and see, try to get an idea of what...
The last time we were in it was when we did some sewer separation work, so we had sewer laterals that were in there, and so there's shock created in there. So, we have people in there not that long ago, so, and there has been some work in there...
How far up?
I don't know how far east it goes, whenever it turns and goes south to the Marcus Street Lift Station.
Well, it runs all the way to the river, doesn't it?
Not the sanitary, it doesn't. The storm does, the storm, those arches run all the way out to the river.
I'm talking about the 10-foot chamber we're in right now.
Correct. Yes, that runs all the way to the river.
When was the last time we inspected that portion with that chamber? We had anybody in there?
Between there and the river, I have no idea. The problem is, it's full of water most of the time.
But that's my question, is, does this make sense to try and hold off to putting the cap back on to, to waiting till we can get to a point where we can at least get something in there to see what this looks like? And the reason I ask is, if the integrity here is already compromised, where's the next spot gonna be? Is it gonna be at an intersection halfway up into town, or is it gonna be in that same area?
Let me explain the situation of the emergency nature of it. So, the, the 10-foot barrel, it's partially collapsed, it has a blockage in it.
No, no, I understand that.
So, in order to even get an inspection done, we need to selectively demolish that barrel, clean out that blockage, put the box back in place, and put it all back together. Then, certainly, the inspection can occur.
Okay.
From the riverside, or through a manhole on Valley or whatever, there are other ways to get into it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, at certain levels, and up until recently, you would've had to have a diver in there, as the water levels were so high. Now, they are declining to a point where it is gonna be better seasonally.
But we have access to it from other points.
Yeah.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? I wanna make sure I didn't forget anybody. All right. Let's vote.
You need a motion to amend?
Oh, I need, yeah, I'm sorry. I have a motion to amend that the resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair amended by, added the following language, whereas the bid package included the base bid, alternate, alternate bid number one and alternate bid number two, now it be resolved upon recommendation of the Assistant City Manager for Public Works, the contract for the base bid be awarded to Carly Nelson Company, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of 247,007, ooh, 247,000 dollars.
247,700.
700 dollars.
I do that all the time.
Wow. Be it further resolved that the alternate bids, number one, in the amount of 124,900, and number two, in the amount of 6,025, yeah, be authorized to the, by the city manager upon necessity during construction.
Second. Moved in second, let's take it to vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Let's vote again, as amended.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Number six.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign our town grant application through National Endowment for the Arts.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
This is a grant into the National Endowment for the Arts for a design grant program, creative placemaking program for Nancy Navy Park, intended to be able to hire a consulting firm on the work on park redesign, utilizing creative placemaking techniques and including creation or installation of public art. This park, we've had discussions in, over the past year, on trying to make it more effective and efficient use of space, especially with a lot of the work that's gone on downtown, additional residents and businesses downtown, while maintaining the character of the park, also trying to add more art to it and make it a more usable and functional space. So, this grant would help in selecting a consultant for design, getting some design drawings, as well as a creation installation of public art, whether that be through some of the amenities at the park or otherwise. It is a grant due here in August. Earliest beginning date for the performance of the grant would be July 1, 2019, so on FY '20, it does have a 12,500 local match, as well as working with the Art Center on matching that amount to solidify the, the local match for this project.
Okay. Questions or concerns from the audience? Good, you're gonna love it. Counsel?
Good.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Well done. Number seven.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final Platte Benedict Acres subdivision review.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
This is a two-lot subdivision located, located in the county, the Two Mile Growth Area of the city of Burlington, where we have subdivision review, essentially splitting up the lot so that there's a home set on each separate lot. Currently, there's a home on a lot that's, would be included in Lot 2, and then this portion of the structures and remaining land would be in Lot 1, so kind of taking two existing lots, reconfiguring them and making them into two larger lots that have homes and then the adjacent land.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Even Leon's not even moving on this one, you know this is a go. Counsel?
Good.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Number eight?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving contracts with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for CDGB and SRF loan administration.
Second.
Mr. Mack?
This resolution would approve a contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to do CDGB administration and SRF loan application and then administration. With the Locust Separation Project, a 5.3 million dollar sewer separation effort for, to meet our consent order, we received $600,000 in CDGB block grant money to, to do that work. With that comes a lot of requirements, Davis Bacon, prevailing wage reporting. The, the contract is $30,000 to do CDGB contract, or to do requirements for that, and then 5,000 for SRF loan preparation. Currently, they are, they're working on environmental work so that we can go out to bid sometime later this fall. We need to do this in order to, to receive the funds and use these funds for the separation efforts, I recommend approval.
Questions from the audience? Mr. Hopkins? I see none. Counsel?
Are we required to have a loan administrator?
Are we, are we, on this deal?
Yeah.
Mr. Mack, you wanna?
Loan administration, or, for CDGB, we're required to have CDGB administration.
Okay.
And the, the SRF is more for loan preparation, and the hoops you have to jump through to get that.
Well, the CDGB was the large, I mean, that's the...
It's the block grant.
But that's the 30,000?
Yes, correct.
So, that, okay. So, we're required to have somebody administer this?
Correct.
You have to have some, I mean, you can have someone who does that in-house, a lot of this, but it is pretty difficult.
You have to have someone certified, too.
We are not set up to do this. I mean, most projects that I've been involved with have either had a firm like Klingner doing it as they're doing the project, or having Southeast Iowa.
Chuck Norris?
Mike Norris, Regional Planning. Mary can call me Chuck, though. On the CDGB, the state of Iowa requires a certain amount of annual training to administer a project. We do this on behalf of our four county, communities in four counties in Southeast Iowa. The SRF, we're also, there's an environmental compliance component to both of these, and so we're actually doing that as well, as well as all the loan draws at the time that need to be done, all of the file preparation and the file closeout, so we're keeping track of all the rules and keeping the city in compliance with both the loan and the grant.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other questions from the audience? We're good? Counsel?
Good.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Number nine?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for assistance in, with consult and selection process for the Tiger Grant.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mack?
This resolution would award contract to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning in the amount of $3,000 to help the city prepare the RFQ process, the consultant selection process for the Tiger Grant. Because it is federal dollars, we have requirements to use the selection process. That selection process is about a 50-page application of different hoops to jump through. My staff unfortunately doesn't have the time to do this. Regional Planning has a lot of experience with DOT forms, and so my, my recommendation is to have them help us with this preparation.
Right on. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Number ten?
Your Honor, I have a resolution waiving the building permit fees for the Southeast Iowa Housing, Inc. project at 425 Hagaman Avenue.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tisland?
This was a request by Housing, Inc. to waive the, the permit fees at 425 Hagaman. This is a lot that they purchased from the city of Burlington. There were some requirements or conditions on the property as far as sale for owner occupied and income requirements for that purchase.
and income requirements for that purchase. They are using SEC Building Trades Program as well and trying to stabilize this area through the construction of a new home. Fees are estimated up to $1,500, factoring in plumbing and electric building permit fees.
Fifteen, well waived. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
Good. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Number eleven?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving permanent and temporary easements with Lamont Limited along Bluff Road for construction of the Flint River Trail.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tisland?
This we just received last week. We've been working with Lamont over the last five-plus months on easement for this property. We previously received an easement from the property owner to South Iowa International Investments for construction of the trail. This easement does secure permanent easement, I believe it's around four to six feet in width, adjacent to the right-of-way for future trail construction. This entire portion is not a part of the project as far as constructing a trail on it at this time. We are looking to make some improvements in this area if we can keep our contractor on site, but we need this easement before we can do anything, whether it's improvements to the property, Lamont's property, or for a trail. And so we're still working through that, but just for reference, this area is the portion adjacent to Lamont's property, just to the southeast of Eighth Street on Bluff Road.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel?
No.
Let's get it done. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for, for state of Iowa revitalized Iowa Sound Economy Rise Funds for a new roadway in the Flint Ridge Business Park.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Shanahan?
Anytime I see a grant like this, I know there's usually a match that we have to do, so I'd like to know how much money we're really talking about there.
This is a 50% match on it. So the overall, what was the projected cost on this?
Our 50% match is $570,000.
About $600,000. And that was something, it was part of, this was part of our CIP. It was, I think, FY20, so we've moved it forward a year, but it does have a match that's tied to it. It builds a road into the industrial park. This is something that had come originally as a request from the Chamber to help with the development of that area, but it's also a benefit. The next piece of it would, after, after doing this portion, there would be a secondary piece that would connect from South Broadway down to where that roadway is. So Eric, what's the, the project?
So the Rise project would connect West Burlington Avenue back to the west at the south end of Broadway, but then that future connection would be extending Broadway down to this portion.
And as that gets done, that helps flow, I mean, I don't know how much of a fan you are of the outdoor recplex, but for the purpose of, it, that's part of the purpose of getting it accomplished too. But I mean, originally, when it did come to the city, is it, is a request from the Chamber in terms of how do we help this to be more accessible and developable long-term for the remaining lots?
A gift that keeps on giving. Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. You never disappoint. Anybody else from the audience? I see none.
You can't vote.
What's that?
We can't do anything until Annie's back.
No, you can't.
Annie's back, guys. Let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Now we've come to the end. You guys have been fantastic tonight, even Leon. Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments, concerns they would like to address tonight? Mr. Hopkins, did you have something you wanted to address tonight? Okay, it's good to see you. Mr. Downtown?
Steve Freevert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. I just wanted to say a few things about what we all dealt with downtown this weekend with the Tamaa project. First and foremost, thanks to Chief Trexel and his department, all the other departments who worked so hard to keep that blaze under control. We, I don't think the community can thank you enough for all the work that you do. You know, this is, this is heartbreaking loss. There were a lot of people counting on moving their apartments into that building, that pair of buildings, moving their businesses in. So, you know, we feel their disappointment. We're very glad that no one was hurt, you know, there were a few small injuries, but it could have been so much, much worse. At the end of the day, we're not losing any apartments that were already on board. We're not losing any businesses that already moved in. Downtown Partners is working with a number of the affected businesses in the area, trying to help them in terms of whether they need to relocate temporarily, giving them some suggestions there. A number of those businesses suffered some water damage, so they're working on getting those places back up. I know Alliant Energy has been working all day today to get power reestablished on the 300 block of North Fourth Street, so we appreciate all those efforts being done. This, this is a setback, there's no question, but at the end of the day, we have lots of great things happening in our downtown, and I, this is not really going to slow the progress, certainly not going to stop the progress of the revitalization that we've seen. I'm a building hater. I hate to lose historic buildings. We've lost too many of them. Every one we lose makes the remaining ones even more precious, so, you know, going forward, we'd definitely like to work with the city on doing everything we can to maintain the historic downtown that we have left.
Bless you.
Bless you. So thanks to everyone for, for your help. It's, it's been very gratifying to see all the business owners reaching out to each other, offering help, offering suggestions. I think things are going to be back, if not to normal, but up and running pretty soon. We're working on plans for temporary relocation of the farmer's market over the next few weeks, so, so I think that'll be happening. It's, it's a terrible thing. We've had terrible fires before, and we're going to have disasters again. This, this is going to happen again. Nobody can stop it, and you can touch the people in Marshalltown who have recently suffered a much more devastating loss than we have. The best we can do is be as prepared ahead of time for contingencies as we can, and to put our best foot forward and move together and look to the future possibilities. Certainly Downtown Partners wants to see something on that site that's worthy of that location and worthy of downtown. I know we have some, some meetings and some phone calls ahead of us, a lot of work to be done in the coming weeks and months, but all is not lost. Stay tuned. I think we will see some good come out of this tragedy.
Thanks for stealing some of the stuff. I was gonna say Steve. Doesn't have the same effect. You did a lot better than me, but well said. Thank you, sir.
One of the things that will go with that, looking to have a place, Grinnell Mutual is the insurance company that is evaluating that loss, and I know, probably have chief talk a little bit about what's going on. They will be holding a meeting at, or wanting to get a meeting scheduled later this week, tentatively. I mean, I don't know if it's, we don't have anything scheduled yet, but later in the week, probably up at the Chamber. They've agreed to host us, us doing that. They want to be able to have an open house or forum where anybody who had damage associated with this, whether it was a tenant from the residential side, commercial side, whether it was a building owner, losses associated with this, come and make, make their losses known to them, so, in one coordinated spot. We don't have the, the time for that or the day, but they're looking to try to get that done later in this week, and we'll, we'll do our best, we're working with Downtown Partners to get information out on that, so that anybody who was potentially impacted by that will be able to be involved with that.
So just to fill you in a little bit about what happened today, so, did a lot on the investigation side today, even though it's just barely getting started, it's gonna take a long time to complete the investigation, but trying to figure out what we're gonna do with the building and, you know, how much the downtown needs to be secured or blocked off and for how long, so we've kind of got a good plan on where to go with that. Getting electricity restored to the 300 block of North Fourth should happen tomorrow. They're coming in tomorrow morning and taking down a little bit of the building that they need to, to make it safe for Alliant to get in there and get the power turned back on to that 400 block, so that'll allow everybody to have their power restored. And then as far as what areas is blocked off, we're looking for a fencing company, or they are, to fence off a large portion, but then allow the businesses on the, you know, across the street from the Tamaa building to have the public be able to access those buildings again, so. And like the Art Center in that part of Jefferson Street right there, they all were closed today, so. If we could get, if we could have got a fencing company in there today, they could have made that happen yet tonight, but we're having problems finding anybody that's not two weeks behind on putting fencing up. So until then, you'll see police officers or firefighters down there, keeping people away from the building and in a safe area, so.
So quick, couple of quick questions. Where are we, as far as the building goes structurally?
Yeah.
Is there at all concern about its current condition coming down either on Third Street or Jefferson?
Okay, so, this afternoon, the insurance company had a firm go in there and do an assessment.
Okay.
And they said it's gonna come down, but not without help, meaning as it sits, it should not fall down. They're saying it won't fall down. So that's where that is.
All right.
Earlier, we blocked off a lot of areas, and I gotta thank Brian Bros, he came down. I asked him to, and, and he came down yesterday and again today, just so I would know, hey, what, you know, what are we looking at here? Because it looked, the building still looks scary. I mean, it's, half of it is down, you'd think, is the other half going to stay standing or not? So I thank Brian for doing that for us. So we got a good idea where to initially secure the area. Now they went in there and done another assessment, and that's what they're, they're saying. So I don't know if we need to do any other assessment on our own of that building, safety-wise.
I think it kind of depends on what, what goes forward, and we're gonna have some conversations with the building owner as the week goes on to between, I think Steve is gonna be involved with that. We have some city staff that will be involved with that and just make sure we have communications. We want to make sure that we protect the safety of the community too, but, but we need to know where the, the building owner is on, on it too. So we'll work with them as much as we can to make sure that that's done and the building is addressed in a, in a safe, reasonable way.
I know I posed a question to you yesterday, and I know what your answer was then, but after somebody's had an opportunity to look at it today, is any portion of what's standing is salvageable?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
I suppose if you were gonna put enough money, you know, I don't think money-wise it would make sense. It is rap, unfortunately.
Yeah, even as you go, are going through this evaluation process, insurance investigators are gonna be in, getting into the building over the next couple of days. Are you gonna get into the building?
I'm not sure if I personally will or not.
I mean, even, even, I'm not even sure if the state fire marshal's gonna go into the building in, in its current state.
Good? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, get some sleep tonight.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Shanahan?
Kind of a question. Is there gonna be any contingency that the city needs to have for resolving any demolition on the Tamaa building?
So this is one where, as, again, working with the owner of the property, we need to see how that works forward, and with the insurance company, and we'll work through the state code provisions in terms of what we can and can't do for establishing a side fund out of insurance to cover our costs, but, I mean, that's part of, we'll, we'll do what we can to make sure that we're covering our response, our liability and responsibility on this too.
So we're probably looking at some money?
Hopefully, no. I mean, if we're able to work things out with the insurance company, the state code provisions, I, I think a mutual insurance company falls under this, but 10% of insurance proceeds are automatically set aside for, for demolition and cleanup by state statute. So that's one that we'll be working through with them. I don't know what the final ultimate cost will be on that, and we don't, we just don't know what the steps are at this point, but it'll have to get addressed one way or another, and we are the, the step of last resort, depending on how things work out.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Audience? Any other comments? I see none. You've all been fantastic tonight. Thank you for your participation. Mr. Tisland? Kathleen?
I take it Peanut Butter and John have nothing to say. Do want to give a, want to shout out to, thanks to all the groups, and I, I don't have all the names, I may have to write them down, but there are several groups of people and even families that came together to try to help and support the fire department. It is truly appreciated. I just want to give a big thank you for that. I know that they appreciated all the groups. I just want to thank the other surrounding departments for the help. We are Des Moines County strong, and nobody comes together in time of crisis like we do, and nobody likes emergencies or tragic situations, but as Mr. Freevert said earlier, that I was going to say, these things happen, and you can't stop it, we can't predict when it comes, but it is good to know that we have good support in, in this town and surrounding areas, so just want to give a big shout out and thank you for that. Also, to our own fire department, Burlington, you guys shine, and they work hard, and just give a big thank you to all of them on behalf of the city. They're appreciated. Also, this weekend, on a good note, we did participate in the Gus Macker Three-on-Three Tournament downtown, and the city had a three-on-three team. Jim Fournau played, Annie played, I was playing, and Peanut Butter played as well. And we got annihilated by, we played two games, we played the, both Midwest Magic teams. I don't know how that worked out that way, but apparently they didn't want us to win anything. But I think the first game, the Midwest Magic Kobes beat us by like eight or nine points, something to that effect. And then the second game, I think, the other Midwest Magic team beat us by like, I don't know, eight or 10 points, something to that effect. So, but the mayor came to play ball, because everybody else had let me down. But I, I did just want to say that it was a fantastic, was a phenomenal event. We had a lot of people out that day. The Midwest Magic, they came hard, and they got us, and I actually owe them pizza, so that'll learn me forever making a wager like that again. I'm done with those days, but it was a phenomenal weekend. It's a shame that we had the, the fire to damper things, but the Gus Macker was awesome. I hope they, they do something like that again, and maybe we'll get an invite to play somewhere again in the future. You never know how that'll work out, so.
I hope not.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Yep, I have nothing, just to thank all of our emergency personnel for over the weekend. We did have a good, good time playing basketball. That was fun. And I guess just keep an eye out for updates on when and where the farmer's market is gonna be Thursday. So we'll, we'll be looking out on Facebook, I guess, right? Yep. That's it.
Counsel?
I just wanted to echo the same thing. My hat's off to all the emergency responders for this weekend, so if it wasn't for your guys' preparation and all the time that you put in when things aren't going on, that could have been significantly worse. There could have been injuries or fatalities, there could have been a lot more property that was damaged as a result of it, so my hat's off to you guys.
Before, before you speak, I want to say this. I read a post, normally I don't do this, but I read a post on Facebook, and I just thought it was, it was awesome. Somebody said, "People complain about the fire department when, when nothing's going on," but they said, you know, "Thank God that we have the fire department that we do, and even when nothing is going on," it's, how did they word that? It was situations like this that kind of, you know, that make up for, you know, the times when there, when there is a down minute, because you guys are always hopping, but these big situations when we need you guys the most, and you guys showed up, so. Anyways, other people recognize it, even on Facebook, imagine that. Jim Fournau, point guard, because you don't play defense.
Point guard, that's correct. Our crew did a great job. You have folks who volunteered for hours and did, came forward, stepped, stepped up both in the police department and the fire department to do, to serve whether they were on, on shift or not. We had multiple departments from the area who helped to make this help, whether it was being here directly or backfilling for other departments, so that they, those departments could be here and put equipment here. Tremendous support from the whole area, and just need to acknowledge how, how much, how much we depend on each other as, as a region. And just like to also express how, how much our community showed support for the fire department, and the, the stuff that you had brought down was very beneficial. You had folks who, who, if you needed something to eat, did you lack for food?
It was pretty overwhelming.
Yeah, and, and, and I think... Yeah, and, and, and I think...
I told Jim today, I can't start making a list of names because I'm going to leave people out, it's, it's a super long list of people that came down there yesterday, and even today, people are showing up.
We had businesses, we had just individuals coming forward and bringing stuff down, and, and the guys really do enjoy that. It lets both the, the PD had a lot of donuts down there this, today too. So, people donated a lot, and, and it, it means a lot, and when people are, especially in stressful situations, you know that people care and are, and have your back. And that really demonstrates, you know, the vitality of Burlington as a whole community. So, much appreciated.
Tschüss.
Radio, Wednesday?
I can't.
I guess it's you and me. No? It's me.
Yeah, yeah, I just have to bring my grandson. Yeah, we're on, okay, all right.
All right, and the only other thing I mentioned, just a reminder, Linda has already signed up for going to the league meeting, if any, it's this year, September, I don't know what the dates are, 12th to 14th, I don't know, it's the end of one of those weeks. If any of you want to go to it, it's in Council Bluffs, certainly let Katie or myself know and we can get, get you registered for it.
Okay.
I will probably go, but I'll have to look at the calendar.
Okay. That's all I have.
You're good to go. All right. If there's nothing, and you got yours, you got your deal figured out, didn't you, sir? Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, can I get a motion?
Motion closed.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes, please.
Rinker?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Good night, thank you.